We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting after the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. You could all please rise. Heavenly Father, we ask you to guide our hearts, our minds, and watch over us as we do the work of the city. Watch over all our residents and all of our employees and grant them safety and prosperity.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Law Director Tony Geiger as the acting clerk.
Second.
Motion's second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. I'll have the clerk call it all.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Miles.
Are there any adds to, any additions to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
We'd like to add, to privilege of the floor, for Diane Rogers, who's going to talk in the downtown mural. Also, we need to add number thirteen on our communications. And Rick Staley is going to do a report of officials to the department, some of that side.
Second.
Motion's second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding a fourth speaker, Diane Rogers, under privilege of the floor, adding communication number thirteen, and adding Rick Staley to reports of officials. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, we have Vicki Sherels regarding the Cheryl Allen Center. I will remind all speakers, when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Council rules allow for three minutes. We ask you to adhere to that time, and it is for you to give your opinion. We do not engage in discussion of the issues at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nixon. And my name is Vicki Sherels. I'm at 1433 South Main Street here in Lima, and I'm the Director of the Cheryl Allen Southside Community Center. Statistics from the National Fatherhood Initiative show that children whose father and other men are regularly and substantially involved in the education and social development score higher on standardized tests, amass higher grade point averages, attend school more regularly, graduate from high school at a higher rate. And additionally, those children have lower rates of suspension, expulsion, arrest, and have fewer incidents of violent behavior. They're less likely to use drugs, alcohol, or engage in premature sex. So we say that fatherhood is a very, very important job that men should hold deeply in their hearts. And most men, I believe, they do that. Tomorrow morning, we are encouraging all fathers of every nationality, race, ethnicity, to take your children to school on the very first day. Lima City Schools, of course, starts tomorrow. We're having our Million Father March breakfast tomorrow morning at seven at the Cheryl Allen Center, and we're inviting all fathers to bring their children to the center for breakfast. And then we're going to have a very short program, which will include remarks from C-Tag organizer Emanuel Curtis, and also a blessing for the school year by Pastor Lorenzo White. And it's most important, we think, that we'll be seeing those fathers take their children to school, meet their teachers, and hopefully meet the administrators, and become an active part of this child's school year. The Million Father March is an initial opportunity for all men to show their commitment to their children's education success on the first day of school. This fatherhood initiative aims to post an honor guard of strong, positive men near the front doors of all the schools. The Million Father March also marks the beginning of a year-long educational, social, financial, emotional, and spiritual commitment by men to their children. For this reason, the Million Father March is an influential and celebrated event in communities worldwide. So we're very excited to be able to participate in this event. We invite all of you to be there. We have about thirty fathers that have already signed up that they will be there tomorrow, so we're very excited about that. This, of course, also kicks us into our after-school program, which opens on the twenty-fifth. We are excited to be able to partner with Rhodes State College in helping us bring in some tutors. And we've also been able to make some other connections with the Boys and Girls Club of Allen County. We have martial arts, of course, and drama and other activities for the students, as well as a nutritious meal that we serve. We gave out about three hundred book bags with school supplies last Saturday, I'm sorry, last Friday, at our back-to-school bash. It was very exciting to see how excited the children were to be returning to school. So that cost for us is about thirty dollars for the entire school year. So we encourage people to have their children become a part of our after-school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on the list for privilege of the floor is Tim Guthrie regarding finances.
Tim Guthrie, Lima.
Your address, sir.
Please.
Your address.
1201 Belwood Air Lima.
Thank you.
I wanted to remind Mr. Nixon that last October, when I was up here, you said you would address Dave Berger's salary this year. Do you remember saying that? You did. Now, last term, Dave Berger made four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for four years. This term, it's up to five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's an increase of fifty-eight thousand dollars over last term. That's an average of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, a year pay raise, fourteen thousand, five hundred. Now, I noticed Howard Elstro says he needs money for paving the streets. If you would have followed my plan, Lima would have had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more this term than the last term. Now, the next term, it goes up from five hundred and eighteen thousand to five hundred and eighty-three thousand. That's an average, that's sixty-five thousand. That's an average of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty per year. And the year after that, or the term after that, it goes up to six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's seventy-four thousand over the previous term, and that's an average of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. I got to ask you, Mr. Nixon, when's it going to end? Because I feel Dave Berger will take every penny that he can get, and he's proven he will. Now, you take these two terms, it's too late for this term, but these next two terms coming up, that's one point two four million dollars for two terms. Finley is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, five hundred, with no automatic pay raises. So, and the mayor of Marion, sixty thousand a year, no automatic pay raises. Finley's two thousand more in population, Marion, two thousand left. So, so that's, if you do it right, four hundred thousand dollars. I'm saying Dave Berger's salary should be eighty thousand dollars, roll it back to eighty thousand dollars. Get him a secretary, because I know for a fact that Lima has approximately fifteen full-time, part-time employees. They don't get any health care, but they do get some sick days and some time off. Why can't Dave Berger have a part-time secretary instead of the taxpayers paying him a mayor's salary? Eighty thousand with a part-time secretary, I say that's around a hundred thousand. So I'm saying in two terms, that's eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, these two terms, it's one point two four, so that's approximately, it's over four hundred thousand dollars. That's going to go into the mayor's portfolio instead of being in pavement and other city improvements. It's just a fact. And I want to know why Dave Berger can't have a part-time secretary. I want to know why he's getting a fourteen thousand, five hundred dollar raise this term for four years, that no one in Lima or in Dave Berger's metro area is getting, and the private sector has that. No one.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
The next speaker on privilege of the floor is Mary Bryant regarding pit bulls.
Thank you for having me. I am here this evening to ask.
Could you give us your.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary E. Bryant, 411 Marion Avenue. I'm in the first ward.
Thank you.
Okay. I am here this evening to ask why. Why must we responsible owners live in fear? I know it was said, responsible owners have nothing to worry about. I wish that were true. But reality is, we do. I mean, we do. We live in fear because our dog's appearance, not their behavior, is in jeopardy. Our breed endures too much amount of hate, abuse, neglect, profiling because of their appearance. This is profiling against our breed and like breeds with the new city law ordinance. There is no difference than racial profiling with this profile. Profiling, the definition, the act or practice of regarding particular people as more likely to commit crimes because of their appearance. We are responsible owners. You're profiling breed and the likes of the breeds that you're profiling that are our pets, our family pets. I've been a pit bull owner for twenty-five years. I've had three different pit bulls, and each one, I never got another one until that one passed of old age or cancer or what be. I now have a mixed terrier. I'm living in fear that if something happens, that my dog can be shot on my property because of this new ordinance. And it's not fair. This is my child, and I'm a grandmother, a great-grandmother, a wife, a mother, and taxpayer, and not an ill-responsible person. I am here to ask the Lima City Council, the Law Director, the committee who helped with this vicious dog ordinance, as well as the LPD, to sit down with our committee of responsible owners and to repeal this ordinance and to make a new ordinance that can satisfy both I am a pity-mani. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Diane Rogers regarding the downtown mural.
Thank you. My name is Diane Rogers. I live at 150 Squire Lane. On October tenth, two thousand thirteen, one month before the establishment of project awareness, I met with the mayor and public works director, outlined our project, and asked for their input, advice, and cooperation. The project included two commissioned artworks created by local artists for permanent display on two downtown buildings for the enjoyment of the community. The mayor suggested we place a city engineer on the square fair board. We did, and his job description is to serve as an advisor to the committee and liaison with city planning. Specific responsibilities are to provide coordination between the committee and the city of Lima to ensure that plans are symbiotic. A downtown Lima Inc. board member is also represented on the square fair board to facilitate coordination. On December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, I met with city council to introduce you to the project. Every development of the process was reported to board members via email, meeting minutes, budgets, and they were all copied, all promotions and solicitations to the public. I met again with the mayor on April eleventh for an update and shared photographs of the mural at near completion and finalized plans for toast to the city, the unveiling, and the installation of the mural with a hard date. Last Thursday, August fourteenth, I received a voice message from the public works director alerting me that Square Fair Inc. needs to submit a plan and design for review and to take out a building permit and make application to design review. The following morning, I received a certified envelope addressed to me from the public works director. Along with the forms, it included a notice of violation naming me as an interested party, stating, I quote, "Failure to obtain approval from the Lima Allen County Building Department and Design Review Board prior to installing a sign and failure to submit plans at 115 119 North Elizabeth Street." I had previously downloaded a copy of the design review guidelines last October as we were developing our plan of action. The document is silent on the subject of art. The notice of violation is also silent on art. I read the included forms that were sent to me, which were the building application for building plan approval and application for certificate of appropriateness. There were no applicable checkboxes on either document referencing art, artwork, or public art. I filled out what I could and submitted by return mail last Friday night. As a volunteer consultant, I worked with the many square fair volunteers, the over six hundred toast attendees, thirty-two corporate and business partners, and the twenty-nine families, friends, and associations to commission two meaningful works of art harmonious with the city environment. The diversity of the subject matter speaks to this democratic approach. These artworks, the mural on the Don Jenkins Building and the mosaic, which will be installed by November first, are just that, artworks. They are not signed by any definition. And thank you for hearing me.
Okay, the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and items B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for 2014 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation to make job incentive payments to custom staffing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Is it you opposed? Okay. The record reflect, Mr. Lo opposed. Communication number three.
From Chief Hefner regarding a fund transfer.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to extend the agreement with Caremark.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo. He left.
I was hoping Mr. Ozer or someone from the administration could answer. When I read this communication, I was a little confused. I don't understand how come HR cannot manage this service and this contract, they're asking it to be through 2017, and it's not due to be over to 2016, and I was wondering if we were just jumping the gun a little bit too quickly. It says that it's been forecasted that it could save the city sixty-three thousand five, but I don't understand why we cannot do this in-house, and I was just wondering if somebody could please tell me why it cannot. It seems like we outsource everything.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
We don't have pharmacists on staff. We don't have doctors on staff. This is an appropriately managed and outsourced contract for drug services for our health plan.
This is pharmacy benefit management. This is just to say, do you need? I don't think they need to.
No, sir. It's not. This is about reviewing all pharmacy scripts that are provided through our benefit plan, and it's done through professional services.
This contract is being asked to go through the seventeenth. Again, it's the fourteenth, 2014. Again, do you think that we're jumping the gun too early on this? The contract's extended to 2016, and we're acting on it. I'm just asking, what's the.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I believe the terms are clear. We can certainly decide not to extend it, but there is a financial incentive to do so. It's in the city's financial interest to extend the contract and thereby receive the savings that they're anticipating.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Lo. The letter also states that the current agreement has been in effect since January first of 2008 and is in place through. The sixteen, 2016. 2016. So it really equates a one-year extension of that contract. So, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into contract for the purchase of a 2014 Ford SUV.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, and legislation's on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into contract for the purchase of a 2014 Ford Fusion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number six be received and filed, and legislation's on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to purchase three Ford sedan police interceptors.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication seven be received and filed, and legislation's on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just want to say a couple things, sir, because I know I may have some constituents asked about this, why Reinecke got all three of these bids from the city for an amount of money, a ninety thousand was one, the other one was thirty-four thousand, and the other one was fifteen thousand something. Reinecke had to be, he's the lowest bidder on this, that's my understanding. If I'm not right, Chief can let me know, but he was the lowest bidder on these, on the cars that we needed for the city. And I know it came up once before, when they go to certain people, they buy them from, they have to make sure that we get the lowest bid. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Was there any further discussion?
Mr. President, I guess clarification. Chief, wouldn't this be a state bid?
Mr. President.
Chief.
We could have purchased it off the state bid, but we actually went out to bid separate from that, and Reinecke was the lowest bidder and actually came in below the state bid price.
Lower than the state bid.
So it actually, by going out to bid like that, you're saving the taxpayers a little bit more money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Yes. Chief, if I could trouble you again, I know we've had, over the past months, how I say, putting out service cars or moving them or auctioning them, and then I see these replacements. How is the fleet at this time, is, you know, in replacement? It seems like.
I will say that our current fleet is in better shape than it's been in quite some time, and I'd also like to point out that of the vehicles that we will be replacing, two of those will be going to the Parks Department, be used by the Park Rangers, and then a third vehicle will actually go to DCD to be utilized. So we're able to actually take ones that are in a little bit better shape. They're getting more towards the end of useful life in terms of pursuit worthiness, that type of thing, but we're going to still be able to get some life out of them for the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to modify section 454.07 and chapter 456 of the codified ordinances.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed, and the Law Director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Just for general purposes, these sections cover the parking meters in the past, and the new ones, they were in denominations of five cents, ten cents, and a quarter. The new ones, if you've been to other cities, they take dollar bills, they'll take credit cards, and our new meters will also do the same. And this, these two sections of the codified ordinance doesn't cover that language, and that's what's going to be prepared. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Auditor requesting legislation to transfer cash from the law enforcement trust fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number ten.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place real estate tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number ten receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number ten and to authorize legislation. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eleven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place demolition assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number eleven receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number twelve.
From the Director of Public Works requesting stormwater drainage concerns.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number twelve be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number thirteen.
From the Civil Service Board regarding industrial monitoring and laboratory chief.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number thirteen be received and filed.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number thirteen. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lo, if you could restate your motion to authorize legislation.
Mr. President, I move that communication number thirteen be received and filed and necessary legislation. It needs to be authorized.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number thirteen and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of officials. Number one, Josh Utterbrink regarding transportation plan.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council.
I had sent over my PowerPoint. Okay. I'm going to pass these. You'll find a executive summary in there for the active transportation plan, and... At this moment, in lieu of the PowerPoint presentation, I'm going to just go ahead and talk through my presentation and lead you guys and talk you through basically the outline and framework for the active transportation plan for Allen County and let you know how to access the plan to review it on, on your own time. About, over a year ago, Activate Allen County embarked on creating the active transportation plan for Allen County. The first steps of that plan were to create a technical advisory group, which was headed by Tom Mazur and the Regional Planning Commission. While working with local officials, we comprised a team from around the region, which I would like to recognize now, from ODOT, we had Beth Clark from the Johnny Appleseed Metro Park District, we had Kevin Haver from the Allen County Engineers Office, we had Brian Rhodes, we had the Lima engineer Kirk Niemeyer from the Allen County Department of Health, we had Monica Harnish from Spencerville, we had Sean Chapman from Delphus, we had Greg Berquist from Bluffton, we had Jamie Mahaffey from Lima Parks, we had Rick Staley. And the first task for our technical advisory group was to select a consultant to lead us through this process in creating, creating a plan for Allen County. Norm Cox from Greenway Collaborative was selected out of Ann Arbor, Michigan, and over the next few months, the group started to take a number of other plans from out, throughout the county, the Bluffton Pathways Plan, the Parks Plans, and started compiling them into one master plan that the county could follow and move forward to make it a much more healthy environment for all of our citizens. Allen County is the number one pedestrian crash county in the state of Ohio. Out of our 1.7% of all of our crashes, we have 6.1% of all our fatal crashes coming from that 1.7% of pedestrian and bicycle crashes, and 12.6% of all our incapacitating crashes. So, right now, if we do nothing to improve the safety and health of our active transportation users, our walkers, our bikers, we spend about $9 million per year, which equates to about $88 per person in the county. So, trying to create a more healthy county and a safer county was our goals in, in starting this plan. So, the first steps of our plan was to, to put a web survey out to find out what is actually needed here in the community from the citizens. So, we started that last November. We then started drafting our policies and programs last January. We put that on our website for public input. In January, in February, we put out our implementation plan for public input. Then last March and April, we put our prioritization plan and survey out for public input, and then a draft master plan last April. And throughout the entire process, we did have some public meetings. We had meetings in Bluffton, in Delphus, Spencerville, South Lima, in Caro, and in Lafayette. And so, through this, we created a plan that everyone can access, both professionals and citizens alike, on the web, on our website. So, if you go to Activate Allen County under our Active Transportation tab, you'll actually see our complete plan for review. And this has also enabled us to continue to edit the plan, to improve the plan in every step of the way. So, we recently ended our time with our Greenway Collaborative at the end of June. So, at this point, we have moved to the next phase where we can look at what projects are moving forward and what is going to stay in the plan, what is going to come to fruition, and what is going to be supported through the public entities here locally. So, we ask that you do go to our website, review the plan for yourself, but I'm going to take you through the four, or the three segments of our plan for, for you now. The first section is our Active Transportation Network. Lima is the hub for Allen County, and we basically have six corridors coming into Lima, from Columbus Grove, one from Bluffton, from Ada, from Walpock, from Delphus, and one to Spencerville. So, we wanted to create corridors where people could safely and effectively transport themselves by bicycle mainly from those different areas. We also looked at the Spencerville-Delphus corridor as a, as a main connector where people could use the canal for transportation. And then throughout the county, we looked at road crossing improvements, areas where we do, we did see a need for road crossing improvements. We looked at bicycle recommendations for the urban and the rural areas, starting with low-cost wayfinding and rural sign routes, up to paved shoulders, which you can see examples of on what's happening on Cole Street here in Lima currently, some buffered bike lanes, which you'll see on West and Elizabeth Street, some of the sharrows, which are examples of on Spring Street here in Lima as well. And there were some spot improvements, some alleyway improvements that could be made to help entice pedestrians and bicyclists alike. And then the next component was our programs and policies. The City of Lima participated in a Bike to Work Day event, which was held in May. We did Bike to School Day events. We have a bike rodeo coming up in September, and these programs and policies all are moving forward to support the, the movement of more walkers and more bikers. We also have implementation and funding strategies because of these, the cost of some of these projects, we want to make sure that they're paid for, and we use the most fiscally responsible methods available to us. So, leveraging any local dollars with state and federal dollars was very important. But, long story short, the plan is to give people an option to walk, bike, use a wheelchair, use a stroller, to go to the places where they work, where they shop, where they live on a daily basis, and not because people are telling them to, but because they believe that it's the healthy choice for them personally, and they get enjoyment out of it, and they feel it is a safe alternative to the automobile. We're not here to kill the car. We live in a, in a area where we do need our vehicles, but we are here to support those to choose to use alternative modes of transportation and to make it safe and effective for them. So, I'd like to thank you for your time and encourage you to go to activateallencounty.com/activetransportation or just click on the Active Transportation tab to look at the plan. When you get to the plan, you can actually click on a map. You'll see the proposed changes. When you click on them, there'll actually be a photo that will come up and will show you exactly what those proposed changes would look like. So, you can actually see the ongoing projects that are happening right now in Lima on, on our plan, and once again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, under Reports of Officials, is Rick Staley.
Mr. President, members of council, it's great to be here again. We think about Parks and Recreation, we, we try to focus on a number of things, but primarily it's service to community, emphasis with health and wellness, and opportunities to build community and community relations. And, and those are things we try to focus on in all of our programming, all the things that we do. Summer Playground Program, again, this year was just a, just a terrific opportunity for six to 12-year-olds to gather in our parks, at our park sites for the Summer Playground Program. Each year, I'm just absolutely amazed at the talent we're able to bring in to help run that program, local high school and college and post-second, or post-college folks who are out in the education business that come back and help us administer this program. Just a terrific group again this year, and it was an excellent program. Our partners, our other programming, our youth softball and baseball programs that begin in as early as April, our adult softball program, our men's, our coed league, and then our men's over 50 league, which is actually wrapping up tonight. So, if you hear an ambulance or two headed out towards Froat Park, you'll know why, but they're playing for all the marbles tonight down there. Of course, Schoonover Pool, and then the event that draws so many people to Lima, Star Spangled Spectacular, that takes place in Froat on the 4th, or dances in the Park Series that Friday nights out at Lincoln, the Concert in the Park event that takes place on Sunday nights drew over 3,200 people into Froat Park during the, the summer months or the summer weeks back in June, July, and into the first part of August. Of course, the Rally in the Square events and, and a toast to the city, just, we're just glad to be part of, of a lot of those, those programs. Of course, our partnership with the Y and with T-ball, soccer, flag football, all great ways to, to get things accomplished for folks in, in the community out recreation, out recreating in our parks and other athletic facilities. Our partnerships with the, the local schools, Lima Central Catholic and Lima Senior High School with, with baseball, and the use of, of the tennis courts at Collet Street for their league play, and the cross-country events that the schools share over there at Froat Park, which will also host this year's Allen County Meet scheduled for later in, in September, a chance for, you know, you know, people from around Lima to come into Lima and use the park. League championship sites, we serve as, as that, for that capacity as well. So, again, a lot of activities within the community and outside the community. Locos Baseball this summer averaged over 600 folks per game, second in the league in attendance, which was, which is just terrific again this year. They put, put as much of a, of an emphasis on, on getting the community involved in their activities as we do, and we, we think, we think it's a terrific partnership involved with that. So, again, all great opportunities to bring visitors into our community, you know. It's an awful lot to get done, it's an awful lot on the table, awful lot for us to take care of, but it's something we do with a lot of passion and a lot of pride. While all that's going on, we still are trying to maintain over 380 acres of land that we're charged with and keeping, you know, maintained, and you don't do that with this an ordinary staff. We've got a very dedicated staff of individuals who work very hard, both recreation and in park maintenance, and of course, our Park Rangers that, that do so much to help keep everyone safe and, and all that. And we couldn't do it without neighborhood associations, different volunteers to jump in and help us out, church organizations, Eagle Scout projects, other volunteers, individuals that, that year in and year out want to give back to the community for one reason or another. Again, those are the things that help make Lima the community that it is. It's people stepping up to make a difference. Again, what's around the corner for us, we got volleyball signups coming up right around the corner here, once school gets back in session. That program will start in the middle of September and wrap up at the end of October. Of course, our youth basketball, boys and girls, will, signups will begin in October, and then we'll wrap that season up, or get that season underway in December. So, that, that's coming down the pike, and we'll give you an update on all that when we get together again in March or April of 2015. But, you know, I, I want to thank you, of course, the administration, for helping us to be able to do the things that we do. If it wasn't for the supportive council and the city administration to make sure that the, the community gets out, it gets involved, and is able to be a part of these, these types of activities, you know, it, it just, it wouldn't be the same, you know. We talk awful, an awful lot of times here about the quality of life, and again, we go back to service to the community with an emphasis in health and wellness and an opportunity to build community relations and community within the City of Lima and surrounding communities. That's what we're about, that's what we want to see continue, and we certainly couldn't do it without your help. Finally, I'm usually asked about the hot date for Halloween. Again, that's coming up here in October, and it's slated, again, with the partnership we went with the surrounding townships, it's the last Thursday in October. This year's the 30th, and we'll remind everybody of that down the road, but we usually put that out because we start getting requests at Labor Day, when is Halloween? So, 6 to 8, the last Thursday of the month, that translates to October 30th, 2014, here in the city. And that's it for now.
Clarify that Christmas is still on the 25th.
It will be on the 25th this year, again. We don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Staley, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your hard work, too. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Low had a question, Mr. Staley.
Mr. Staley, how you doing? In your report, I didn't hear any reference to Schoonover Pool. When, earlier this year, there's a couple of times I called you, I told you I was very pleased with the way the parks were looking. When you're doing right, I want to praise you, but I, I feel that Schoonover Pool was wronged, I had several phone calls. We went to go to the Schoonover Pool today, and it shut down. And I go, what? And I drove by, and it was closed. And this was on 80, 90-degree weather days. It has not been open, I know this month, and I was just inquiring, why did the pool shut down so early this year?
We usually close after eight weeks, Mr. Low. It's, it's, this year is, is no different. We, our staff starts heading back to high school, our lifeguards, our, our management team starts heading back to college. So, we do state that in the beginning of the season. We, this year, we closed the pool, I think it was the 3rd of August, August, I think it was a Sunday. Yes. We, we've, you know, be honest with you, you know, it hasn't been a great year for the pool as far as the temperatures, but when we talk to our fellow poolkeepers around the area, Delphus, Walpock, they all struggled this year with attendance, with the numbers of days they were, because we did have a kind of a wet July as well, but it is, you know, with the pool, where we have it, where it's set up, very, very few of the ones around here stay open through Labor Day, and we haven't done that since I've been on board. We, we usually try to close up after eight weeks because we don't, we just don't have the staff to maintain what we have to have out there as far as guards for the surface water that's there.
Okay, I'm not asking that it stay open to Labor Day, but I know this year, it appeared that it opened rather late than it usually does.
No.
It was in June.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It was... As soon as school got out, remember there was...
Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, there was, it's, pardon me?
It used to be Memorial Day weekend.
No, we have not, we, we haven't had the staff since I've been here and before that, we've been able to do it because our staff doesn't get out of school until after that. With the winter we had this year, we weren't sure we were going to get it open as early as we did, but we were able to in June. It's usually that first or second Saturday in June that we open up, and then it's usually eight weeks after that, is what our, our budget kind of keeps us at.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Reports of committees and Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
In the, in the absence of Counselor C.M. Miles, I would like to step in her place. At this time, there was a Neighborhood Concerns Committee meeting that met June 2nd, 6:30 PM. All the councils have received a copy of the minutes, and I move that her minutes be accepted.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file, the, receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Counselor Miles. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I would just like to also note that in the report, she covers two other meetings, July 10th and July 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, I was going to mention that, too. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just want to make sure, because I know some folks had, one thing she covered was the ground halls on July the 10th, that we discussed about how we're going to try and handle the ground halls. I know I had a lot of emails about the problem of ground halls, so we're still working on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The next committee report, is that a finance?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on July 22nd at 6 o'clock. All committee members were present. Steve Cleaves walked us through a mid-year review of the budget, and the main points, which I passed out to council members, are that the water and sanitary sewer enterprise funds... funds are one-half and one-third respectively of the size of the general fund, which is at thirty million dollars, and are characterized by the heavy and growing debt load required for capital infrastructure demands resulting from federal EPA mandates. Labor costs are seventy-six percent of the general fund budget and only twenty-six percent for water and thirty-five percent for sewer. The percentage of capital and debt servicing cost of the budget is less than five percent for the general fund, about thirty-five percent for the water fund, and about forty percent for the sanitary sewer fund. EPA-mandated fixes for combined sewers will cost in excess of one-hundred million dollars over the coming decades and will increase the sewer fund debt service and capital spending load to over fifty percent of total budgeted expenditures. The strength of the general fund impacts the bond market's view of the ability of the community to support the enterprise water and sewer fund requirements, and therefore, the interest rate the city gets for required borrowings to finance the projects. Maintaining a healthy general fund financial position is essential to obtain the lowest possible interest rate cost for water and sewer projects. And the point that Mr. Cleaves was making to the committee at that meeting was, if we don't pay attention to the general fund and we let it, we let the cash balance, the carryover balance dip too low, even a minor tick up in interest rates with the amount of money that we're going to have to borrow for the sewer fund would mean significant rate increases to the customers. The general fund revenue expenditures are as expected at mid-year 2014. Revenues at fourteen-point-one million or fifty-one percent, and cash expenditures at fourteen-point-three million or forty-eight percent. Some one-point-three million for capital has been approved at mid-year. An additional five-hundred thousand is proposed to be spent by year-end, bringing the total capital spending for 2014 to over one-point-eight million dollars, and we see some of those ordinances for the police vehicles on tonight's agenda. The general fund will be required to finance a majority of these capital purchases to maintain a relatively secure cash carryover at the end of 2014. The city's current cash carryover as a percentage of spending is near thirty percent. It is expected that the cash carryover at year-end 2014 will be about twenty-seven percent after the financing of capital purchases. Labor costs are near budget at mid-year. Labor costs are seventy-six percent or more of the general fund budget, and regular manpower numbers must be constrained, when possible, to maintain the city's financial health and maintain essential services. Third-party labor contracting will be used when economic and where allowed to by the existing labor contracts. There has been ongoing hiring activity for about twelve safety service officers in 2014. This will add over six-hundred thousand dollars per year in labor cost to the general fund budget going forward. The third-party labor savings help fund our safety service employees. Third-party contracts, third-party labor contracts save from twenty-five to thirty percent of the cost of a regular employee's actual rate per hour of worktime costs. Mr. Cleaves reviewed the capital spending items, which counselors have seen, and I would move that this report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve. The Finance Committee report, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance one-eighty-eight-fourteen.
An ordinance amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance one-eighty-eight-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance one-eighty-eight-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Miles.
Ordinance one-eighty-eight-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance one-eighty-nine-fourteen.
An ordinance levying a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
I move that one-eighty-nine-fourteen be passed when it's first read.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance one-eighty-nine-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Miles.
Ordinance one-eighty-nine-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance one-ninety-fourteen.
An ordinance levying special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance one-ninety-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance one-ninety-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Ms. Miles.
Ordinance one-ninety-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance one-ninety-one-fourteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan, Inc., for the purchase of three 2014 Ford Sedan interceptors.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance one-ninety-one-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance one-ninety-one-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Ms. Miles.
Ordinance one-ninety-one-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance one-ninety-two-fourteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan, Inc., for the purchase of a 2014 Ford Fusion S four-door sedan.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance one-ninety-two-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance one-ninety-two-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Ms. Miles.
Ordinance one-ninety-three-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance one-ninety-three-fourteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan, Inc., for the purchase of a 2014 Ford Interceptor SUV.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance one-ninety-three-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance one-ninety-three-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Ms. Miles.
Ordinance one-ninety-three-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Privilege of the floor, Mr. Gordon.
First of all, I want to thank all those who checked on me during my little procedure that I had and all the prayers that were sent out. I can tell I have a lot of friends and a lot of new friends up here on council and some old ones, too. Sam and Derry.
They call me old.
Yeah, Sam and Derry. And also, I want to mention that yesterday, I went out to the fair, and my wife's an employee of St. Rita's, and we were a guest of St. Rita's, and I just kind of want to mention that the great care that the hospital there takes care of its employees, man, we had a great time. And so I just thought it was important to mention what a nice time we had out there and St. Rita's take care of the staff there. And then the final thing that I have is to remind people to be good to each other. I got in trouble for not saying that two weeks ago.
Sam forgot, too. You did.
She should have kicked you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple items. One, our Northside Neighborhood Association will be having its meeting tomorrow evening at seven P.M. at St. George Cafeteria. Everyone's welcome. Also, I want to refer to the traffic commission. You know, the bike paths are going through Lima on the corner of Melrose and O'Connor. We've had issues before. I've referred a stop sign, whether it be three-way, two-way with a yield sign. I want to refer that again because now we have, the intersection is going to be with a bike path going through it, and it's very dangerous. So referring to the traffic commission, the intersection of Melrose and O'Connor?
Second.
For a two-way or three-way stop.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. The motion, the second, is to refer to the traffic commission, review of the intersection of Melrose and O'Connor for consideration of a traffic control device. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And I want to thank Mr. Staley for his report. You know, he did speak a little bit about a community, and the things that we have are parks, the things that we use, like our ballparks, that are used by our total community. So I want people to, that's out there in the audience and everyone around us, just think that we have a community to live by and everyone enjoy it because there's not a lot of communities that have the items that we have to use and enjoy like we have them here and the beauty behind them. So I want to thank Mr. Staley for his report and the job he does publicly. A lot of kids enjoy this summer just because of those programs, so thank you very much. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to follow Sam with the beauty of things in Lima. I was a little ashamed of what has happened. I heard the report by Ms. Diane. I don't know when our city is going to get to the point where we start embracing different ideas. We had some artwork that was displayed. It looks great, not because I'm on it, but it looks great, and I took that as a great honor. I don't think a day goes by where somebody tells me, "I seen you at the Cubey." I'm like, "No, you didn't."
Yes, I did.
And I, it's just a wonderful honor. But I tell you, if we don't start embracing different ideas, different art forms, without, I'm just going to say, games, we have plenty of opportunities, plenty of meetings where individuals could have said this is what we needed to do. I want to go on the record to let you know, I do sit on the board. There was ample opportunity. There was plenty of meetings for those issues to be addressed, and I just really feel ashamed that that happened the way it did, and I'm sorry to the president of the board and to the lady that put it all together. The second thing I would like to say is, I called Mr. Elstro about a situation on Cole Street. There were some pretty deep potholes over there, and I called him on a Tuesday, and if I believe right, I think it was taken care of Wednesday. And that pastor of that church, a fellowship church, they had my grandmother's repast there. He asked, could it be handled? And at the time, I actually thought it was the Tevins' ward. And I did call him today to let him know that it had been taken care of, but it's Ms. Ann's, so when she gets back, I'll let her know. But the quickness was greatly, greatly appreciated from the pastor, and he told me to make sure that I publicly thank Mr. Elstro and Public Works Department. Third thing that I have in closing, with football season starting, many of you know that we have a drum line that meets over at the Bradfield Center on Tuesdays from six to seven P.M. It's absolutely free. We teach the kids how to read music, write music, play music. We've had the opportunity to show our skills and our art form in different parades and different venues around the city. If you would have a child between the ages of eight and a hundred, you are more than welcome to come and join us, and we are actually doing an enrollment tomorrow. A lot of kids stopped to play their fall sports, so we have a lot of positions open. So if you know of anyone that would like to participate, again, it's at the Bradfield Center. We start at six P.M., and we feed the children also. We've had great companies step up, restaurants step up. So we feed them, then we teach them, then we play, then we go home. So if you would like to participate, you can contact me at four-one-nine-three-seven-one-three-three-eight-three. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
One item, I'd like to move that the absence and pay of Counselor Miles be approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to approve the absence and salary of Counselor Miles. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items. First of all, I'm calling a Public Works Committee meeting for August twenty-fifth at six P.M. There'll be three items as in the committee to be discussed. The first one is what Counselor Lowe had referred to the committee on the carpet in council and council chamber. The second item is coming out of the Finance Committee. It's the leases that the city holds with nonprofit and other agencies for buildings that the city owns. And then the final one will be a discussion on foreclosure as it relates to code enforcement for discussion on how we can better get responsible parties to take care of the property under that scenario. And again, that's August twenty-fifth at six P.M. Tuesday, September second at six-thirty, Hope Neighborhood will be starting up again and meeting at Unity School. At the same time, their first meeting, they will be hosting the next mayor focus session, and that's where the mayor and the administration comes to give status of situations, projects, and also to hear concerns and answer questions. And then it's September second at six-thirty P.M. at Unity School. A reminder that we've heard a couple of times this evening, from privilege of the floor, City School starts tomorrow. Be careful driving, looking out for the children. There's going to be some excitement going to school, and they're going to be tired when they come home, so they may not be paying attention, so please pay attention of them. We do not meet again until September eighth after Labor Day, which is September first, so I want to wish everyone a happy Labor Day. And I'd like to refer and kind of piggyback what Counselor Lowe was talking about on the, what Mrs. Rogers had spoke on the sign. As past chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee and the present chairman, Counselor Glenn, it had been referred while I was chairman that the city does not have a sign ordinance, and it's still in committee. So Counselor Glenn, as committee chair, can possibly hopefully call a meeting to address that, and that came from when the sign on Nitzes went up.
It was supposed to be there for six months.
So appreciate you coming tonight and speaking, and some points were well-taken. And it also maybe will address the digital sign that's out front of the city building as well. Finally, please enjoy the fair, hope for good weather, and I'm looking forward to attending it here in the next few days. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I will be calling that meeting, let Sally know and make sure everyone get well-known about the sign situation because I got to find out, I got to look at my schedule. I didn't bring my calendar with me tonight, but I'll make sure Sally let everyone know when we're going to have that meeting because it's still in committee. Thank you, Ms. Adams, for bringing that up. I was going to bring it up, but thank you so much for bringing that up, but we're going to be looking into that. But she will be letting everyone know about it. Also, I wanna thank, uh, uh, if anyone, I know, Miss, uh, Vicky came here for the May of Father March, and I'm blessed that I have three boys already schooled. My kids are grown, besides my baby, right now is a sophomore in college right now. So I will take part in being a father for one of the kids tomorrow morning. I will be there for that, 'cause I think that's very, very important, uh, that the kids, that, that, me and Father March tomorrow, that we take part in it. And, uh, I know she didn't say any one of the kids without a father can have that, but I will step in and try to help some of the kids out. If a kid wanna go, I'll be able to take him. And I wanna thank all, and this is so great, and I appreciate the plant managers I met with, and I know Staley just brought something good up that we look out for one another. The four people that got the jobs didn't have no car, then the next-door neighbor come up and say, "Hey, I'll take you until you get a car," and they take them all with a wall park every morning, and that's what we gotta look at, and I agree with Mr. Staley on that. You know, and that's how our summer program went, everybody helping one another out, making us have a fantastic Fourth of July program, everybody pitching in on that, all the volunteers, but this guy volunteered doing this, it's so great. And, and first I'd like to thank the plant managers I meet with, and they give us the opportunity to give some people some employment. Thank you. Also, kids tomorrow, uh, going back to school, and, uh, every year I have opportunity to get out and, and try to get around to all the schools and, uh, and welcome the kids back to school. And this year, I'll be doing a little bit different, maybe giving you book bags, 'cause I got so many book bags left over. Uh, we was blessed Sunday, a guy just dropped a whole bunch of them off the house, didn't leave my wife his name, but, uh, if he looking tonight, I appreciate it. I don't know where you from, I don't know that you dropped off six hundred book bags, and I will take them to the school tomorrow. Any kid doesn't have a book bag, I will give it to you. Or you can call me tonight, come by the house and get them. And my wife said, "It's okay to do that, say that, but come by and get one," you know, 'cause I got so many, I gotta get rid of them, but thank you, whoever donated them. And, uh, it's just a blessing that we still got good kind of folks and, and wanna give something out, uh, for our kids in the community. I got a phone call, uh, right before I came to city council, and, uh, it was really nice that that lady had drove by on Main Street and asked that, and she thought that our worker out there was cutting, uh, the railroad grass, and that was Mr. Banks out there cutting it, and she say, "Tell him he doing a good job out there." He's here at city council tonight, but I appreciate that, and, uh, and we got a phone call, and I know we made some moves on it last city council, but, uh, got a phone call from Mr. Atkins, from the CSF Railroad, and I appreciate his calling me back, and they are gonna work some things out, trying to get some of that grass down on, on, uh, tracks there, but, uh, but she had thought Christopher's job was to go out there and cut. I said, "No, he can't cut but a thousand feet over there. He can't go in the railroads and cut." But she say, "Really? But he making it look nice." They're just telling that, so he came to city council tonight, so I can tell you to have a doubt calling, and appreciate what the work you did out there. August twenty-ninth is a, a great day we gonna have. We got seven, and we getting more and more churches getting involved with this. It's getting pretty big, and I appreciate Dr. Jefferson, uh, spearheading this, that allowing everybody to come out and have service in the area, and it's great, and we need it. We need it really bad, and, uh, God, we need a lot of prayer in our city. And, uh, so more churches getting involved from all over, and I appreciate that, you know, that, that they see this as a need, and we hope that we can get some of the police officers that come by and say hi to some of the folks, and when they're in the, they're in the tents, you put the tent up, and it would go on for seven nights to September the second. So we hope that everybody come out, have a good time with this. You know, these people bringing their churches to the tent, and they feel they, they wanna do this, I'm believing it too, that they need to get this done, that they can go around. They are gonna go around the neighborhood and talk to people, see what they need, anything they need to help with their homes, anything like that. Also, the summer toward the end, I wanna thank the folks that donate to paint this summer. Thank you guys so much, and they don't like me calling their names out, don't like for no donations, no awards, no nothing. These people just doing from the kindness of their heart. You know, they fixed two roofs this summer, painted two houses. I mean, they just come out, and when, and when I make the phone call, they say, "Mr. Glenn, this way it is." And, uh, and I just wanna, I wish I could just bring these people here tonight and say thank you, you know, 'cause they helped us out so much, and, and I never brought them out in newspaper, 'cause they don't want it. They just say, "We was here to help you out." You know, help the folks that in the needs that wanna make a life, make their life different, make a different life. Also, the Greenfield Height had the, uh, annual, they had the annual homecoming, and, uh, appreciate all the people who came out. The, that, I didn't get to stay that long, though, 'cause we had, our, our last son was on his way back to college, so we had to get down there for him, so I didn't get to see how the turnout went, but some people gave, said it was really good, and everybody got out, picked up all the paper, and I wanna thank Saul, too. Uh, we had a little problem there on the street, he, so Saul came right out, took care, and that was so good about it, you know, you know, and, and I'm not trying to toot the horn for Howard and Public Works, but you know, every, all the guys, they, they will take care of, they will give you a call back and let you know when you're coming, you know? They don't let it drag out two and three days. They gonna give you a call back until you're dating time to come, and that was so good about it, being in Lima here. And I know we got people talking about the dogs thing, and I had opportunity to talk to you. You know, we all gonna be ups and downs with it, though, but could we find a solution to it? You know, we don't want our kids, we don't want nobody leave Lima, leave Lima. That's why I want our kids to get jobs here. I wish my boys come back here and be teachers here. You know, I don't want them in a dating area teaching. I want them to come back here so the kids can see that, hey, we love our city, we want our city to grow. You know, our income, housing is great, and that's my baby. My baby promised me that he'd come back here to teach. I hope he don't change his mind, though, but that's what he told us, me and Judy, when he, we took him there, but we want them to come back home and call this home, 'cause it's a lot of work, a lot of work, but it take all of us, and, and I just listened to what Staley say, and he, he brought up a good point. It take all of us. We just can't sit back and bicker about it, come together, and that's why I told some of the people there, "Let's come together and work together, and we can make Lima a great place to live. Don't point no finger and none, let's come out and do it. Just do it like Nike commercials say." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Um, I just have a couple of things, a couple of items that other people have talked about, but I encourage everybody to go out and support the Allen County Fair, and also, by the time we have our next meeting, we will have, uh, gone through the Labor Day holiday, so everybody